All meetings ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have three students that actually represented us at a very important conference under the direction of Ms. Pyreus Empowering Women in Leadership Conference sponsored by the district attorney. I'm going to introduce them to do the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask the committee that after we finish and take a roll call if they can just maybe give us a little update and summary of their experience because I think it's important for our school. First, Destiny Wong is a junior student from Lowell. She's enrolled in the Health Assisting and Pre-Nursing Program. She is currently involved in the dance club and has performed in a number of our school productions and holiday shows. Also, we have Emily Tilson, who's a junior from Drakett. She's enrolled in the Health Assisting and Pre-Nursing Program. Emily is a member of the Skills USA Officer Team and represents the team as historian. Also, we have Genesis Spencer Peña is a junior from Lowell, enrolled in the Health Assisting and Pre-Nursing Program. She works part-time at Taco Bell and enjoys gymnastics. I'd like Destiny, Emily, and Genesis to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone going to speak?
After the roll call.
The secretary, call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheen?
Yep.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Getchia?
Yeah.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Can you give us a brief update of the conference, the leadership conference you attended?
So, Middlesex District Attorney Mary Ann Ryan hosted more than 450 students from 30 middle and high schools across Middlesex County at this year's Empowering Girls 2019 Conference at the Cary Memorial Building in Lexington. This year's theme focused on leadership, self-discovery, and goal-setting in the face of obstacles. The eighth annual Empowering Girls Conference built up upon past conferences themes designed to encourage the students through compelling speakers and interactive presentations. Speakers in both sessions encouraged us to persist in pursuing our goals and to never let stereotypes to define who we are. While we were there, we heard from the district attorney about why empowerment mattered and how to achieve it. Opera singer Gina Rosario taught us how to build our voice and her journey of acceptance. Then we worked in groups about different representatives to solve a common issue in our communities. Our job was to convince the panel, which consisted of lawyers, assistant district attorneys, and victim associates, to pursue our issues and support our change.
Our topic was insurance and the mental health issues it can cause. For most people, some medication is a matter of life and death. Most low-income families struggle to get the means necessary to live even if they don't need medicine. We brought up facts about Big Pharma selling life-saving insulin for over 10 times the amount it took to make it. Overall, our group learned valuable tactics to face obstacles without giving up. We learned to stand strong in the face of adversity and to never stop a discussion of topics we are passionate about.
Good work.
Sounds awesome, ladies.
Thank you.
Before we move on with the agenda, I'd like to welcome our newest member to the board, on behalf of the board, Lee Getchia is from the City of Lowell, is filling the remainder of the term from Ray Booton, who had left us. Lee is no stranger to the school. He's an alumni at the school, very caring individual, knows a lot of aspects, and we look forward to serving with him.
Thanks, Curtis.
Anything you'd like to say, Lee?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Committee mineral here. Would there be anyone signed up for public appearances?
No, nobody's yet to speak. You caught me short there.
That's okay.
I was introducing something, but Lee has been, many of us know him just from his attitude and it's from his support in many of the sections of the City of Lowell, and he's contributing a lot of that now to and to make Lowell even a better school than it is right now.
Thank you. Thanks, George.
Thank you. Now, we'll have the school committee communications. Any communications? Hearing none. We will now hear from the reporter, the student representative, presented by Isaiah Carasquillo.
Organizations and clubs. The freshman sophomore class committee hosted a veterans brunch on Saturday, November 9th. Two honorary veterans were recognized, as well as all veterans who attended. There were about 160 people in attendance, including 17 veterans. Proceeds raised during the event will be used to offset any future activities for both the freshman and sophomore classes. The committee also approved of making a donation to the Wounded Warrior Project with some of the proceeds from the veterans brunch. Their next field trip is scheduled for Tuesday, December 17th, after school. They are going to Chunky Cinema to see Jumanji: The Next Level. They estimate 80 freshmen sophomores will attend this event. The junior class has been busy planning for their junior prom, which will take place Friday, November 22nd, at Lindsay's in Drakett, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Ticket sales are going well, and we anticipate a great turnout. City of Lights float. Construction of our City of Lights Parade float is well underway. This year, the design of our float will be a Charlie Brown Christmas. The float will depict various scenes from the popular holiday special and a future Lucy's Snow Globe Stand. In honor of the parade theme for Festival of Snow Globes, please join the Greater Lowell Tech community on Saturday, November 30th, 2019, at the City of Lights Parade, which begins at 5:00 p.m. The math club. Students participated in an eSTEM action problem during STEM Week. Multiple objects and candy were placed in different-shaped containers, and students learned different methods to estimate the number of items using mathematics. In addition, the math club hosted a math problem game set to tune of the game show Catch 21 on Wednesday, November 20th. This was suggested as an activity by a sophomore member to help prepare our math club for upcoming winter-spring competitions. The media club currently has one project that the students are working on, which is the 2020 M.A. Safe Jobs for Youth poster contest. This is a cash prize contest of $500 for the first-place winner, $300 for the second-place winner, and $100 for the third place. The National Technical Honor Society held their annual induction ceremony this month. Forty-three juniors and seniors were inducted into the National Honor Society and the National Technical Honor Society in a candle-lighting ceremony, followed by a reception in the mall. National Honor Society is also proud to announce that senior Kevin Lapp from Engineering has been selected as a school's candidate for good citizen of the Daughters of the American Revolution Society. The outing club had a great hike in Andreas Art Institute in Brooklyn, New Hampshire, on October 29th. Ten students and two advisors had a great time seeing the art installations and enjoying the grounds. Students also enjoyed learning about the environment at their Lo-Rex party on November 19th. Peer tutors. There are currently approximately 25 peer tutors who are working in the morning and after-school homework assistance centers on a rotating basis. They are working with students and assigned teachers to assist peers with academic and technical assignments. Skills USA has been extremely busy this past month. In addition to their annual officer installation ceremony held last week, they hosted an extremely successful after-school event from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. with over 80 students attending workshops and games run by their officer team. To top off their busy month, the students' offices will be attending the Skills USA Massachusetts Fall State Leadership Conference this coming weekend. Student council. The school leaders are currently working with student council to plan this year's pre-Thanksgiving pep rally. Events planned include a student-staff basketball game, performances by the dance team, and Griffin cheerleaders, and other activities. Athletics. Boys soccer wrapped up a successful season by qualifying for the MIAA D2 tournament. While they dropped a tough game with a talented marblehead team, there is still plenty to build off heading into next season. Girls soccer fell one point shy of qualifying for the MIAA D2 tournament, but the future looks bright for the team. Sophomore Azilis Som named CAC League MVP and will be surrounded by many other talented returners for next season. Class Country had a successful season with strong finishes at both the CAC League and state vocational meets. The team also returns a number of the talented runners to next year's team. The golf team wrapped up their third-ever season with strong showings at both the state vocational and CAC League matches. Senior Trevor Green also qualified as the Griffins' first-ever MIAA sectional tournament participant. The cheer team opened up their competition season with the second-place finish at the Textbury Invitational, as well as the CAC League competition. The team will look to build off these successes as they head into the winter season. Lady Griffin volleyball had one of the most successful seasons in the program history. The team finished with a regular-season record of 14-6 and advanced to the MIAA D3 North semifinal before dropping a tough match against eventual champion Ipswich. Marcy football is in the midst of one of their most successful seasons in over 15 years. The Griffins currently stand at 7-3 heading into their annual Thanksgiving Eve matchup with crosstown rival Lowell Catholic. The team's wins include victories over Whittier, Greater Lawrence, and Northeast, all of which are first in at least 15 seasons. The team also qualified for the MIAA playoffs, advancing to the semifinal round before falling to the eventual champion Bishop Bendwick. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
You too, thank you. The chair would just like to let my colleagues know relative to the City of Lights Parade in Lowell. If you're planning on marching, they would like us to meet at Jackson and Central Street at 4:00. And rabble started approximately 5:00 towards City Hall with the lighting of City Hall by Santa himself.
Will we be decorating the float, Chairman?
Will we? Only what you bring.
Okay, I like the candy canes and peanuts.
Yes, George?
No, just one quick question on that. You want the float to end up closest to Merrimack Street or furthest away? Usually, it's way up on one side.
I don't dictate to the city how they line them up.
Oh, I thought I heard you just say something on that.
Usually mean at the end of Jackson.
Yeah.
Usually towards the middle or end of Jackson.
Okay, yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 24th? Motion by Committeeman Bahu, seconded by Committeeman Sheen. All those in favor?
Mr. O'Hair?
Roll call, sorry.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
I'll abstain, I wasn't here last month.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Reporter, the treasurer?
Yeah.
Approval of the warrant, which will require a vote.
Hope to waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading from Committeeman Morin, seconded by Committeeman Sheen.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me.
Yes, Committeeman O'Hair.
There was just one motion we kind of previous jumped over. Is this appropriate?
You're talking about, that's the second page?
Yeah. All right, well, this was the first page. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion is to approve expenditures for the sum of $4,065,433.78. Motion by Committeeman Morin and Committeeman Bahu, seconded by Committeeman Bahu.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me.
Yes, Committeeman O'Hair.
There was just one motion we kind of previous jumped over. Is this appropriate?
You're talking about, that's the second page?
Yeah. All right, well, this was the first page. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion is to approve expenditures for the sum of $4,065,433.78. Motion by Committeeman Morin and Committeeman Bahu, seconded by Committeeman Bahu.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Reporter, the general counsel.
Good evening, Mr. McCow. Good evening, I was already this evening.
Good.
I've just got two items for you. One will be very, well, both will be pretty quick for this particular moment. I'm happy to report that we found out earlier this week, some of you already know, that the town of Drakett approved at its meeting this week, earlier this week, the first of the amendments to the regional agreement that we had been working on earlier this year. So that is one down. We'll wait to hear from the rest of the towns. The second item that I have on here is listed, there is a, I'm requesting that you go into executive session, but you can save that till the end of the meeting. That's okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll now have the reporter, the superintendent-director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a few items. First on the list is the Cooperative Education Report. We currently have 177 senior students participating as of October 31st. This is a rise once again from last month, and a rise from the year before at 36%. Good work to Ms. Bezanzin and our teachers. Second and third, I'm pleased to report on two recent grant awards. The first grant is the Career and Technical Education Partnership Implementation Grant. There's a letter from the governor included in the packet. We awarded this competitive grant $98,982 from the Department of Education. This grant will help us expand our program to increase CTE opportunities for students. Part of the grant is working with the Greater Lowell Workforce Board and the Career Center of Lowell to offer school programs in auto-technology and pharmacy technician to adults starting in late November. Good work by all staff acquiring this grant. This was a very competitive grant. I'm really happy to say, working with the Greater Lowell Workforce Development Board is a big plus also. The second grant, also from the governor's office, is a cybersecurity awareness grant. We awarded this competitive grant from Massachusetts Office of Technology Services and Security. This grant provides our school district with training, assessment, and simulation tools. It's not a financial award, it's a gift award. However, because we got the first award, we're now eligible to apply for financing money in the second round. So again, this was a very competitive grant, one of about 16 schools and municipalities that got this. Proud of the work that our administrators have pulled together, and there's a letter in the packet that states that also. Number four, Outstanding New Teacher Award. Hold on one second. I'm pleased to inform the committee that the Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers has selected one of our teachers, Alexander Eden, as the Dawn Sather Outstanding New Teacher Award. This is an annual award first given out in 2004. It recognizes an individual who's gone above and beyond what is expected of a new science teacher. Alex has been with us for a short time, however, he's made quite an impact both with the staff and obviously the students. On behalf of the school district, I'd like to congratulate Alex, who's in the audience, if you can stand up to be recognized. Good work, Alex. Thank you, on behalf of the school district.
Good job.
There's an accompanying letter in your packet that states that also. Finally, number five on the agenda is our yearly MCAS presentation, and before I ask some individuals to come up, I just want to set the table as I usually do. This is probably the 13th or 14th time as a superintendent or assistant superintendent that I was part of an MCAS presentation, and I say the same thing every year. The first thing is our teachers are working extremely hard, and they continue to work hard. Second, as we all know, the MCAS test is only one way we recognize and measure our students. We saw tonight, just for the past 15 minutes, six or seven items that show success in our school district. However, this is the game, game rules that we play by, and as you know, which you've been informed, this year was the new generation MCAS for every school, district, and the state. I want to introduce our outstanding, hard-working, and dedicated administrators who put a lot of time in terms of disseminating information and working with our teachers to look at the data. We've been doing this over the past two months. So I'd like to start and invite Ms. Davis, Mr. Barton, Ms. Rahani, Ms. Chisholm, and Ms. Palladino to come up, and I'm going to join them there also.
Good evening, everyone. I think before we begin, I'd just like to introduce everyone individually, so you know who's here because there's some new administrators.
Please proceed, Mr. Davis.
So, first, I would like to introduce Mrs. Allison Rahani, who is our new Special Education Director, Mrs. Kate Palladino, our new ELA/ELE History and Reading Cluster Chairperson. You all know Mr. Michael Barton, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Mrs. Chisholm, our Cluster Chair for Math and Science.
Thank you.
So with that said, tonight, as a team, we're here to share with you our 2019 accountability report, as well as MCAS results. As the superintendent said, this is the second year of the new accountability system, which is designed to measure how a school is doing and what kind of support a school needs. This is also a transition year, which was the first year that our students took the next-generation MCAS test, which is a computer-based test with new standards and new achievement levels, as you'll see later on when Mr. Barton begins to talk about the MCAS results. The new system, again, considers the following. 40% student achievement, which compares our student progress year to year. 20% student growth, which compares our progress with students of similar demographics. 20% high school completion, which includes our graduation rate, extended engagement rate, and dropout rate. Our 10% English language proficiency, this is how our English language learners are making progress towards acquiring the English language, and 10% chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. In addition, there is a focus on 25% of the lowest-performing students, which comprises 50% of the total calculation for the new accountability system. With that said, as a result, Greater Lowell's district accountability classification is not requiring assistance or intervention, and the reason for this is that we are making moderate progress towards meeting the state's targets. Approximately 92% of the schools in Massachusetts achieve this classification level. And we want to say that we attribute this to the focus that we had this year on improving science achievement for all students, improving English language learner's performance in ELA Math and Science, and improving chronic absenteeism. In addition, our school accountability classification, which is different from our district accountability classification, because in the school accountability classification, the subgroups are considered, and the subgroups are not considered in the district accountability classification. And as a result of that, due to the low performance of our Asian subgroup, we are classified as a school that's in need of some support for our low-performing Asian population. With that said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Barton, who's going to begin the discussion on the MCAS results.
So, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight to talk about the MCAS results and the overall accountability system. So, if you recall, last year, or for those of you who were here, our main area of focus for this year, among all students and achievement for all students, was improving our science scores. We had a lengthy discussion last year about the improvement of biology scores, particularly in 9th and 10th grade. We also talked extensively about our English language learner population and how that population's growing significantly in our school district. So, the first thing I'd like to start off with is to point out our science and biology scores. So, as you can see, we did fairly well in science, technology, biology in comparison to the previous years. So, you can see on the left side is the district, so the blue bar represents our school, and the yellow represents our comparison to the state. So, in terms of meeting expectations, you can see we far exceeded the state in science, technology, and particularly biology. That's the first time we've done that. So we're particularly pleased with our growth in the area of science, technology, and biology. The areas of concern for us are English language arts and mathematics. As Ms. Davis said, it's a new test with new standards and a test that's now on the computer. So it's the first time we were tested with a completely online test, as well as a completely new set of standards that we've just begun to implement. So, on, again, the district represents the yellow, and the blue represents the state in terms of English language arts and mathematics. And what we would like to see is our data to show that we're exceeding and meeting expectations. Unfortunately, that's not the case. So clearly, we have a lot of work to do in these two areas, English language arts and mathematics, and that's in terms of all students. So what I want to draw your attention to, though, is when you look at English language learner students and formerly English language learner students, we did well. So, as you can see, in some instances, if I draw your attention to mathematics, we met or exceeded the standards for mathematics. We exceeded the state in partially meeting expectations, and we were below in not meeting expectations. Same is true in math and English language arts, where we're just about where the state is in terms of our data for English language arts. And in science, technology, and biology, again, we exceeded the state. So we're particularly pleased with how our English language learner students did for this year, this go-around. In terms of non-disabled students and students with disabilities, that's continued to be an area that we're focusing on and doing considerable amount of work. So if you look at biology, again, we exceeded the expectations or met expectations in terms of our comparison to the state. Clearly, we have, again, work to do in terms of English language and mathematics. So we know where our areas are that we need to focus on for the school year, and you can clearly see in the distinction between how the state did and how our school did. Same is true in students with disabilities. You can see that we're pretty much where the state is in terms of how we're doing with science and technology with respect to students with disabilities. You can see in terms of math that as far as exceeding expectations are about the same. We're below when it comes to meeting expectations, and we're just about the same in terms of those students who are partially meeting expectations. Same is true with English language arts. So, you know, we have work to do clearly when it comes to students with disabilities and students without disabilities in terms of English language arts and math. One area that we need to discuss and we need to examine fairly carefully is our Asian population, and I want to explain this pretty carefully. So as Ms. Davis said, the state has called our attention to our population of Asian students. So last year, there were 88 students that fell into the Asian subgroup that took this test. Now, the interesting thing about it is the Asian subgroup in our school district tends to be, and is in this case, our highest-performing group. So I just want to repeat that. So the Asian students that we have in our school tend to be the highest-performing group that we have. However, in comparison to all of the students in that group throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we're not performing as well. So in terms of achievement, in terms of growth, and specifically growth, so when you compare the students in our school with the other students in the Commonwealth that took the test, we are not growing as swiftly, quickly, and strongly as other students in the Commonwealth. So that's an area that we are particularly focusing on. That's a group of students that we're paying close attention to, and that's a primary, primary area of our focus this school year.
Mike, that's only 88 students?
That was 88 students that took the test last year in the 10th grade.
That's the Asian subgroup.
Right. So, you know, to be frank with you, it really drew our attention to this area because, again, they typically are our strongest students. Yet, in comparison to students throughout the Commonwealth that fit into that subgroup, we're not moving as far as test scores as strongly as other students in the Commonwealth. So, yes, go ahead. So, yes, go ahead.
What potential is the explanation for that?
Well, I think one of the explanations is the Asian subgroup that, in our school, also tends to be a subgroup that falls into low income. And that's not typical of the subgroup across the state. So not everyone in the state falls into two of the same categories.
So you think it's an economic issue?
It could very well be a socioeconomic issue.
How many of these Asian?
Lowell has a very large, or this area has a very large Asian community?
It does. And when you look at the data of vocational technical schools across the state, Lowell has the largest Asian subgroup in the state of Massachusetts. And again, we're being compared against all the other schools in the Commonwealth.
How many of the eighty-eight Asian students are in the advanced coursework? Do we know?
I don't know, but I can get you that figure, and I would say that there's a large amount of them.
Large amount?
Because, again, the Asian population within this school is functioning in the highest two percent.
Many of them, not all of them.
So there's a large amount of the eighty-eight in the advanced coursework?
Well, let me answer that more carefully. The advanced coursework category is only for eleventh and twelfth-grade students.
Okay.
So.
All right.
And the MCAS scores are just for tenth and ninth-grade students.
Mike, as I was just following line, I read a couple of months ago, the state is changing the MCAS. And they're giving extra time or a couple of years before full implementation in some aspects. How are we preparing or how are we dealing with this versus the rest of the state? What do you feel?
So I think that we have done a good job in the idea of making teachers and students aware that there's a new generation test. However, after looking at the results, and I think Ms. Rahani, Ms. Palladino, and Ms. Chisholm will talk more in detail about this, but I will say that awareness has been raised. Attention has been called to the areas of need. However, I think we need to coach and teach and work with our students to persevere more on this test. This test is very different in the sense of the standards are more challenging. The reading is more in-depth. The writing is different typically on the previous MCAS test. It was pretty much the same writing assignment every year. This one is a wider variety of writing assignments. So it's really calling for a really different set of skills for our students. So awareness is raised. People are working toward it. And I think it's heading in the right direction in terms of where we're headed for this. So I feel confident that, over the next year and years to come, we can transition well with these new standards.
What can we do? What is the difference in the economic? What benefit are the other members of the state, of the Asian communities, and the other communities? What are they getting differently economically? It sounds like it's a cultural thing, because our Asian students seem to be doing exceptionally well within the population. I don't know if the economics doesn't make any difference at that point. It's cultural. There's a drive to be successful.
Could very well be, but I think.
But why is it falling behind, and it's being explained away as economics? What can the parents do differently, or what can the state do differently, or what can the school do differently economically in this area? What resources need to be made available to the students? Because I'm not sure I'm getting that. It sounds like it's more cultural.
Well, I mean, Asia's a very big subgroup. So when you say Asia, you have Chinese population, you have Japanese population, Indian population. And in our case, we have a Southeast Asian population. So I'm not sure I feel comfortable making generalizations about an area that large. But I do know that when we talk about the Southeast Asian population that we have, they do perform very well. But that's coupled with, you know, the challenges of living in an urban environment. So I think that that's, you know, a contributing factor to the performance level here.
I just got a couple of questions, because like I said, I'm new to this. I'm just looking back over, comparing nineteen to eighteen, and I understand it's a test. And I'm going down, and I keep hopping on the advanced coursework, because when I pulled it up, we didn't meet one target at all. We didn't hit one. We were four-for-four, eighteen, three-for-four, and seventeen. We're oh-for-four this year, and then on the four-year cohort graduation, we're oh-for-four in 2019. We're three-for-four in eighteen, and we're three-for-four in seventeen. What are we doing wrong?
So we can break that down.
I have it broken down here.
What sheet are you looking at, though? Because I think.
Well, I'm looking at your targets that you gave me, and I went back and looked under the school accountability data. Then I'm looking at the advanced coursework completion. And we're down over fifty percent right across the board. Are we missing something? I mean, we got declined in everything. Are we missing something, like all students were down thirty-nine point one?
So I think I need to be clear to state that when looking at the data and trying to, you know, analyze what the issue was, we found out that the issue was a reporting issue, that because things were reported incorrectly, that that impacted this score.
Okay, so.
So since then, we have corrected what was reported incorrectly. However, the state doesn't change our accountability rating. But we have made a correction to our reporting so that it doesn't happen next school year.
Okay.
That's all we can do. They don't give us, say, okay, you can correct it and give us credit. But we realize it was a reporting issue.
I understand that, but what's the policy in place to make sure that didn't happen? Obviously, it fell, and this is probably the most important issue that we have, most important report. I mean, the students aren't getting the credit for the work they did, because we dropped the ball. How do we? Well, I guess I'm gonna ask you is, what's the policy that was in place that wasn't followed? I mean, does someone input the numbers? Who checks those numbers? Who gave that person the numbers to put the? They should have never left the building and got to the state without us realizing. I mean, I'm a layman, and I just went back and I looked at 2019 and compared it to eighteen. We should have been able to, eighteen and seventeen, they should have been able to do that before it left the building. It should have never left the building. We should have realized our mistake before it went to the state. And I guess, once it goes to the state, they're not gonna take it back. I guess we're the example now, for lack of a better word. And it should have never happened. And I guess I'm asking right now is, what are we gonna do going forward to fix this? Obviously, we can't fix it now, so we own this.
Yep.
So these numbers could be, like, I'm asking the Asian students, the eighty-eight. I was told we don't know how many in the advanced coursework. But I'm looking over here. We're at ninety-one point three in eighteen. I understand the test changed, but we're down to sixty-four percent. Now, that error of misreporting, could we be at eighty-some odd percent? You're saying no?
They're two different, separate things.
Okay.
So the advanced coursework tab or category represents tenth and eleventh students that are enrolled in either dual-enrollment courses, advanced placement courses, or co-op. So it was a reporting error, as my understanding is, the parties responsible for that reporting error have been, it's been examined, and I'm confident that that won't happen again.
All right, so what was the policy in place? What happened?
I can't speak for the policy in place, because I'm not aware of the policy when it comes to reporting for that particular advanced coursework.
Okay, so I put the numbers in the computer. Who checks what I do?
The person supervisor.
Okay, so they missed it. Who checks what they missed?
The state of Massachusetts.
So we go from a data entry clerk to a supervisor, right to the state? I know at the union hall that I run, I have four sets of eyes or something before it goes out. Because if I don't, Verizon's gonna pick my pocket, just like the state did to us. So it doesn't make sense to me that we only have two sets of eyes.
Yeah, I think you're calling to attention something that definitely needs to be.
All right, so can we get me a policy? Can we come up with a better policy?
To check state reporting?
Not the state reporting, the numbers we put in, because it wasn't that the state takes the numbers we give them. That's what I'm being told, right?
Well, I mean, you're saying you want a policy around.
I wanna make sure this never happens again. That's what I'm saying. I mean, this is, honestly, this is bad. We're down fifty percent, sixty-four percent to thirty-two. That's what I pulled off their website. All this is off their website that I double-checked that you gave me. And I mean, I'm not an educator. I work in manholes for a living. This is, I picked up on this. It just doesn't make sense to me, and I don't understand how we get out of the building without being. It should have been rectified before I get out of the building. We should have caught that, not the state.
I agree.
I agree fully, but.
Was this late reporting or no reporting?
It's misreporting.
It's misreporting.
So it didn't go on in time with the.
No, it's misreporting. Things were reported incorrectly. It was an understanding of what should be reported as post-secondary versus what should be reported as advanced coursework.
Can we move on over here?
Also, one little thing.
So I think the reporting also stemmed from the year prior. And that's how we realized this year that it was a reporting mistake.
We recognized the errors when we received these results. And based on my investigation and Jill Davis's investigation, we found that it was indeed a reporting error, and we called that to the attention of the Superintendent. And we had lengthy discussions with all parties involved in order to ensure that that didn't happen again.
Didn't you put the same way last year?
It was reported.
It was reported, yes, it was. But the mistake wasn't visible until now.
Like the previous year?
Right, because, yes.
Yes, it was reported accurately the previous year.
No, it was not. That's why, that's why this year's looking as poorly as.
Is this the first time of this, I guess, reporting method?
It's the first time the accountability system has broke down this way. Last year was the first year of the new accountability system.
So this is the second year that.
So this is the second year that advanced coursework was included.
So in 2018, we reported to the state improperly. And now you're telling me we're reporting properly?
No. On both occasions, it was reported improperly. We.
And the state accepted these numbers in 2018 and said it's okay that we're reporting properly?
They wouldn't know that we were mis.
You can proceed, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So as far as areas to grow, I'll turn it over to Ms. Chisholm. She'll talk about mathematics and its sources of improvement.
So we examined the data this year. Last year was the May when our students took the exam. It was the first time they had taken it on a computer. And we were also following the new standards that were introduced less than a year prior to that. So given that together, we looked at our curriculum as it is now to find, to figure out ways that we can help students meet the new standards and how they can test on a computer more proficient. So with that said, we had a course called Algebraic Foundations, which was a support course to help students, to help close gaps. And we used to cover that for a year and then send students to Algebra One in their sophomore year. What we've done now is incorporate Algebra One into Algebraic Foundations course so that students will have double the time on learning. Half of the course is dedicated to closing the proficiency gaps, and the other half is so that they complete a full year of the Algebra One curriculum. So our area to grow right now is that all of this year's freshman students will complete Algebra One at the end of this school year. What we also did was to try to determine if there was, if there were areas of deficiency with the student's content knowledge or on the computer. So what we've done is we took the exam, the computer exam, and we have given this year's tenth graders the test on paper to see if there is a difference on how students perform on paper versus on computer. So we're gonna analyze that data, and what we will do is we'll identify gaps that our students have so that we can work on that. And then we will also work on how they can be more proficient taking the exam on the computer to keep our students on track. All of our midterm exams this year for all freshman and sophomore students will be done on computer. If the results from the mid-year exam are not up to our expectations, we will then give the exam on paper. And that is to see what the content knowledge is, how much content knowledge our students have. We're also sending some teachers to some professional development for how our students can develop a more growth mindset, how they can persevere, how they can use the mathematical practices, different strategies to help them solve different problems. And also, lastly, we have a math coach who is going to come into the classroom. And the focus of that coach is to help our students move from proficient to, to exceeding, from meeting expectations to exceeding expectations, and from partially meeting expectations to meeting expectations. So the focus of the coach is to help those advanced learners. Yes?
On the computer isn't. When the problem was posed, they can do it by hand on paper, and then they answer on the computer by filling in a circle or a dot? Or are they showing how the work is performed on the computer also?
So they can use paper to solve the problem. There are nine different types of questions. And when I say type, not mathematical types, I mean computer types of questions on the computer. Drop-down, drag-and-drop, double-answer, move-things, pull the computer, pull the calculator down. So that's some of the things. Those are the things we're really looking at. Do the students know exactly how to answer? When it says drag-and-drop and fill-in, they have to know how to do those type of things.
I'm just thinking outside the box for a minute. Wouldn't it be easier to put a simple problem on the computer to see how the kids are utilizing that simple problem and solving that, than going to a piece of paper and saying, here, solve it over here, when you've already done that same question? So I'm thinking you do a really simple question on the computer to see if the methodology of the student and the application is working. And then you can make the problem more complex. Because I think sometimes if you do it on the computer, all right, and you have the same problem on paper, and the kids are really guessing, you're gonna get a mixed bag.
Right. So we don't create the types of problem. That's why we do the problem two places. So one of the things is you're testing for two things: use of the computer and all of the nine different types of questions, and you're also testing for content knowledge. So that is why our midterm exam will come both ways, because we want them to be prepared to know how to take the exam, and we also want them to have the content knowledge to take the exam.
Because if the computer's failing us, and they're not being able to use the computer properly, that should be easily identified fairly quickly, right?
That's what we're doing right now. That's why all of the students were given the test on paper to figure out if, so there's two ways to look at that. If all of the students are successful on the paper test, then we know it is not a content knowledge.
It's a computer issue.
It's a computer, right.
Yeah, I got you.
And if it comes the other way, then if all of the students are actually dragging and dropping, then we know we have a content area deficiency.
Chisholm, is this the first year that they took it on the computer, the MCAS?
Yes.
I think you have great ideas on how to go ahead and take care of it, the content knowledge and stuff like that. But I do know, being on the school committee for a number of years, mathematics has always been the one that sort of has been pulling at us and never really obtaining its level that, you know, they never really mastered the state like this. But they are more so now. So how do we sort of grab on to that content knowledge that would be more beneficial to the students? Because this is an ongoing, multi-year thing, so.
So first, we've taken Algebraic Foundations, and we've combined it into a double-the-time-on-learning course of Algebra One with support. And we also have an additional support class in tenth grade. So tenth graders in geometry also have the opportunity to take something called Geometry Foundations, which is another support class to help struggling learners.
Is this the first year we're doing that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then you mentioned something like every student needs to finish an Algebra One course by the end of the year.
But in the ninth grade, yes.
Again, that's good. Was that not a prior?
No, not, no. So some students, our struggling learners, would take a full year of what we used to call Algebraic Foundations, and then they would take Algebra One in the tenth grade. and then they would take Algebra One in the tenth grade. So now what we're going to do is those students will have double the time on learning, support combined with Algebra One their freshman year. Sophomore year, they will take geometry and we also have the Geometry Foundation Support Class.
Okay, sounds like the work is in order. You've got a pretty good grasp on it, but the math numbers have just been a struggle.
Yes.
So I think, Mr. Baffler, there's two things that are going on. We're trying to close a gap at the same time we're trying to get them to be able to be proficient on grade level standards, right?
Sure, and I and I think there's a third thing, there's this computer issue.
Well, now there's the computer issue of is it the computer? Is it lack of content? Or is it the difficulty of trying to manipulate the computer to take an exam?
Based on prior years, I'm just saying.
Which are struggling learners struggle with complex problem solving and you add the complexity of trying to manipulate tools on a computer to solve a problem makes it compounds the difficulty for them. Practice is important. I think practice, the more practice and exposure that they do have to taking an online test is is critical in getting them used to using the computer to take an exam. The state right now just has one exam that they can practice on out.
And the content knowledge is just huge, I personally believe.
Well, well, it's a big part of it, right.
You know, put on paper and then.
And there was a shift in the standards this year. So this is new standards for both English and and math.
New standards meaning greater, more difficult standards?
There are a hundred standards now that the students are responsible for.
In respect to how many prior?
About sixty.
So are they are they difficult? I I think it, yes. Students need a different mindset of thinking to achieve these standards.
And this tutor, how many tutors do we have, math coaches?
Math coach? We have one math coach right now.
How many math coaches?
One.
We haven't opened it. We have a poster right now for.
And a posting up for another one.
Okay, because the meeting expectations, I'm going to guess between the meeting expectations and partially meeting expectations, that could be as much as four hundred students.
Yes.
So one math coach might be a lead.
There's a there's a posting for two.
There's a posting.
Two people.
Exciting.
We hope so.
I got one better than you.
And it's nothing criticize anything that happened yet today because I think you're a hundred percent right where you should be. However, in the past, let's say in the past, almost the past month, we had people through a different system within Lowell try to get their students into Greater Lowell. Now, I don't know whether that's a good thing or a bad thing at this particular time because it's me generating new standards, I would think, at that time. Whether that's going to come to fruition, I don't know. However, the next thing I read in the paper, which is today, guns out in out in the right of the field, right in the field house or right in the high school. Would we get some type of correction from us rather than the other system that they were going to keep them? Now, do you think that sounds like a good student is looking for help? You know, guns, guns during the daytime and just not being able to either wanting or not are going to get the work done? That's happening right now. As a matter of fact, I think we were in here in terms of students from another system trying to get here. Now, that's that's but that's still a major factor.
I I think, Mr. O'Hair, we can talk about that at a different time because I I think what what you're talking about is the after-doctor program and the partnership that we're trying to develop with with Greater Lowell. So I I I think you're making some good points about what that partnership would look like. But I think at this time, you know, that wouldn't have any impact. That partnership won't have impact on our MCAS and our MCAS score. That's a partnership so that they can obtain some technical skills.
Good, good point. And guess what happens? Someone shoots sets up with a gun. Is that what we're doing today? Guns, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Could I just intercede here for a minute? I I have an issue because our primary goal here is vocational education, all right? And we get bogged down in the academic side of it to some extent. I look at these statistics. Is there any statistics out there as how Greater Lowell is doing as against other vocational schools on these academic numbers? Because you're getting a different kind of student. You're getting somebody that wants to work with their hands primarily or using some of the school time to teach them a trade. And we're we're taking away from some of the other academic opportunities unlike the regular educations that you're coming forward. So it this the state breaks it down in this way. How do we actually compare to other vocational schools?
So.
Academically.
Academically, I think we're in the middle of the row.
And can we get above the middle of the row? Because we're very proud here at the school.
But it's very it it's difficult to compare us to other technical schools because of our demographics. We don't really mirror many of the other technis- technical schools out there. So it's it's even difficult to to raise a comparison.
See, sometimes I find those to be excuses, all right? I'm I'm kind of looking to see what we can do from an administrative point of view to help these students exceed against the other.
I'm not saying that we can't help them succeed. I I think that's our job that all of our students succeed. I'm just saying comparing us with another technical technical school.
May not be the right.
May not be the the right way to do that. I think we need to we we need to be self reflective on what we're doing and set goals and just compare ourselves against ourselves. And take to compare ourselves against someone else, it's very difficult to do that. Again, the demographics, the students that we're getting.
So is there is there another statistic or something that we can as a committee and a board look to?
Sure.
To see if we're really meeting our goals or we're not meeting our goals?
I can give you one that that we were discussing examining last week. So over the previous several years, say ten years, the state has provided data on college completion. So the state collects the data of how many students from Greater Lowell Tech and other high schools go to two-year colleges and four-year colleges. And typically, our college degree attainment statistics were actually very, very low, below five percent, five percent, six percent. Typically, kids would go to two-year colleges, which is great. But the but their ability to complete and acquire a two-year degree, the statistics were very, very low. We were looking and discussing this last week and I was looking pretty in-depth at the number of students that are going to four-year colleges and the number of students that are going to two-year colleges. And I'm pleased to report that although it's not part of this presentation, the statistics of kids acquiring degrees is much, much, much higher than it has ever been.
From four-year schools.
From four-year schools and to a degree two-year schools. That's something that we didn't bring to your attention, but if you were looking, and I think it's a great question, that is certainly a statistic that that we can point to as academically, there is significant improvement in our school that may not have been the case as far as that statistic years before.
Is it fair to say that we're the most diverse technical school in the Commonwealth?
I would certainly say so.
I I don't I don't have any data or comparisons, but I'm just.
I would.
Knowing what I've seen over the years.
I would say yes.
Especially particularly for its size, yes.
So for that size, we we would have we would have our although not insurmountable, we would have our problems relative to certain populations, correct? I can I can see where Kempton is coming along those lines.
Sure.
So. Okay, George.
I was wondering, is that motivation here to meet the criteria that the state sets or to get these students, whatever their skill level is, out of here being productive students? I mean, these are the people that we're concerned with. The state sets these things, right? They set the same ones for Lexington, but, you know, Great Barrington, every state, every there's no one-size-fits-all. If we can just get each student out of this school, leaving their potential, then I think.
So I think that's what our goal is and what the mission of this school is to prepare our students for college, career and citizenship. And I think that's what we want our students to do. I think if you look at our co-op data, I think I I think that's evident that we are preparing our students for the world of work, that students are out there, they are employed and they are successful. That's something that the MCAS test doesn't measure. And 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 that's something that technical schools, I don't think, get any credit for it for in the state and something that we should be proud of.
And I think that should be our goal. Get these students.
And I think we do see I think we do see that on Skills USA days in district competitions when our kids are out there very confident doing doing what what they came to this school to do and 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 showing how how they've learned those skills. And that's evident in our performance during Skills USA.
Back to the diversity issue. What can the board do to support in in trying to bring these diverse students to the same level that the state expects? What can we do as a committee here and as an administrative body to move these students? Yeah, they come from different backgrounds. They we have a great diversity. How can we push them in the right direction? Because we're we're bound by these guidelines and these rules and we have to account in this manner or fashion. But what can we do as a group here to help with the diversity issue or the cultural issue or the the economic issue? How can we help as a committee here to bring everybody to what everybody in the state wants us to do?
Then I think you're doing it. I think you do it well. And the best way that you do this board does that and you've been doing it for years, specifically the last two years through the budget process. Over the past two years, we've added seven new teachers into the school district to affect the achievement. Mike had early had told you that we had invested two years ago, this board with their vision, invested money into science, two science teachers, AP Science. And you saw a result here tonight.
A new ELA teacher.
In the science arena, the rest of the arenas, we have not done so well, even with the seven teachers.
Well, we focused on the science, as you recall, right?
Right.
So so the go back to your question. What can you do is continue to be active during the budget process and try in that return on investment when we talk about that and support that, which you've done. I mean, and we we talked about that recently as we're going through the budget process now. We came with one administrator, which we had multiple conversations about, right? It didn't fly. Every time that I brought up a teacher, we brought up a teacher to this board, you ask good questions about it, but you always approve it. So I think that's a continuation of what you can do as a board. The second thing is continue to look at, which I thank you, George, for bringing it up, is the mission of our school. And if I can make an excuse, and I'm not supposed to say it, maybe it's not an excuse, it's a reflection. How do we compare? How do you expect us to compare in math when our kids, over a thirty-week period, right? Even though it's forty-two weeks in school yet. Over a thirty-week period, primarily, they have math, right? What, every other week, right? And you have other schools that we're getting compared to. I don't care what they do. They can do whatever they want. They can have math Saturday and Sunday if they want. But our goal and our mission is a vocational CTE education. And obviously, that program, vocational program, is vital to the student. How do you compare? How do we get to it? It doesn't match up, right? Compare us to other places, if you want, that match up to the same model that we have. I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm okay with that. So I think in terms of what the board can do is to continue to look at what our mission and goal is in terms of the school. And then, you know, look at some of the other items. I think a small item is look at some of the implementation risk-taking items that we've talked about. And we talk about the after-doctor program and being able to support things like that. And, you know, after school, then we look at them. You know, we we talked last year about adding a mental health component, which obviously helps with the academic piece in supporting that. And then continuing to fight, you know, for the for the dollars, which we're going to probably see a very significant amount, most likely, in the new student Opportunity Act. It just got it just got passed by the House and Senate and, you know, the governor's looking at it now. It's going to pass. There's going to be there's going to be some money tied to that in looking at those type of things. So that's what I think those three things are the main things. I think this board, and you you know what? I'm not patronizing. You've been doing it. You've been doing it well.
Just another question, because when you got vocational training, when I was in school, I looked at how does this apply to everyday life? And I'm wondering in the if they're in their vocational class, a three pitch shows you some geometry on how to calculate. Is that being reinforced reinforced in the shop? And that helps reinforce the math down the road? And and that goes with, you know, hairstylist and medication administration. I'm wondering if the math and the sciences are being applied in the vocational part of the education also on a pretty, it's like this this fits everyday life, so then they can apply it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You sure? As as, yes, we are, as as that's really called integration. And I think.
That's a better word.
Right, as as you said, that, given though that there's a hundred standards in this math test and not all of it will apply to the technical area, they do do a very good job when it comes to applying mathematics, science and language arts to areas in theory class and areas in the shop area that apply. That's that's definitely being done.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Button and Ms. Davis, please continue.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Balladino.
Good evening. So after we received the data, my cluster and I sat down and looked and examined as a team, since I have five. We are a team and I stressed to them that in order for us to do this work and to do it right, we need to really work on our interdisciplinary piece. So the first thing we came up with, three big areas of growth. And the first one we focused on is writing, which is what I'm going to be talking about the most. The second area of focus is inferences. And the third area focuses with the computer for the ELA test. They have to toggle toggle in between two pieces of literature and sometimes three, which our students are not, were not as prepared for it, not in terms of trying to just hit the button, click and click. So the so really the logistical pieces of it. So the first thing we came up with is we have a creation and implementation of a revamped Essential Concepts of English course where the students who are will be who are in it are are high-risk as well as some of the students from the Asian subgroup. It's really going to be focusing on, like I said, the computer piece as well as the different types of writing. One, the next thing, we're focusing on strengthening writing through PD opportunities as well as sharing best practices. I'm speaking with through two different writing coaches right now and hope to make a decision on which one I'd like to have bring to the school and really work with my teachers, not only in the workshop model, but as well as coaching them. I also believe that we my teachers are working really hard and they have a lot of great ideas. But when you've got thirty-two, we don't always have a chance to sit down. So I would like to really start to use more of my time to share best practices out. Social Studies just got new standards last year as well. So we are actually aligning more in terms of our literacy standards in social studies with what's going on in ELA. So we just met yesterday and we were talking about, okay, so we've got these literacy standards that are focusing more on nonfiction. How can we design our assessments to really align with what the kids are going to see and what they're learning about in EL in ELA as well as what they may be learning downstairs in the shop? ELE, we just purchased brand-new textbooks that have more of a nonfiction focus to help strengthen the curriculum. One of the struggles we have in ELA, I mean, ELE, is trying to find interesting materials that is on our students' reading level and right above it. So we we purchased the Edge series for our students and I'm happy to report that all of my ELE teachers are really excited about the new textbooks. They use them all the time and they've got the brand-new readers as well. So we are, it's a team effort down in the down in my wing, so.
Which is way over there.
Which is way over there, down by the gym, so. Any questions? Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Special education, Sir Honey?
So our department met and we started out with an item analysis going over the test question. So our department met and we started out with an item analysis going over the test questions. And identifying trends regarding what types of questions our students with disabilities were having trouble with. The pattern seems to be higher-order thinking skills, things requiring analysis, comparison, synthesis. Was very challenging for our students. Additionally, uh, writing was also challenging. Um, and so we we had a lot of discussion as a group about what we felt may be the root cause. Definitely, people felt that, the teachers felt that uh the computer had a major impact. Um, it's a multi-step process when you're clicking around between two different excerpts, pulling evidence. Then synthesizing that into a writing, um, you know, answer and response. So they were feeling like the students were kind of struggling with that piece when they were taking the test, and they noticed that when they were proctoring it. Um, so that was some of the feedback. Uh additionally. We questioned if our students fully understood the questions due to the vocabulary embedded in those questions. If that was tripping them up, and they weren't necessarily potentially getting to. Uh, the root of what the question was really asking, and then therefore just picking from the pick list essentially. Uh, so that that seemed to be problematic. So what we're doing is we're uh. Infusing a lot more vocabulary practice into our study skills sessions and embedding that as well in our co-talk classes. Um, we're working on uh some practice and repetition with those words, so it's not the first time they've seen it when it's on the test. Uh, and that can be done through various platforms like Quizlet, for example. Um, and a lot of uh technology tools that are good for practicing uh that with students. So we're working on that. Um, and the other piece, they felt. Uh, where our students struggled was um with grit and perseverance. We weren't sure if the computer version perhaps has a little bit more anonymity. Where if you're handing a test into a proctor and they see what you wrote, there's some accountability there. But behind the screen, it's like you're just clicking and they don't know if you just clicked through it. So we're not sure about that, and we're looking into that. Um, and one of the things. Uh, we're doing for that is embedding more social emotional learning strategies into our classes. Uh, to help build uh their grit and perseverance. Uh, and reduce student shutdown, because we we encountered that a lot in the classroom as well with our struggling learners and. Um, we're constantly looking for strategies to keep them engaged and um motivated. Um, and then the the last, lastly, I was looking to utilize uh teacher observations. Uh, to make um the incorporation of higher-order thinking skills visible in the classroom. Um, I think a lot of our teachers have spent a great deal of work on remediation. And um there are certainly ways to infuse higher-order thinking skills. Uh, and remediation and kind of marry the two, and so far, um. I think our students haven't had enough exposure to those higher-order thinking skills. They're perhaps accustomed to the information being given to them, but not having enough um. Processed with it in terms of um practicing higher-thinking skills. And so we're working on uh strategies in the classroom to incorporate more of that and have it be visible. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any more questions? That that's the end of our?
No, actually, it's not. You have some more slides to do, or you?
We do have additional slides. Are there any additional questions we can go over?
Well, I I think the only thing I wanna say is is respect to um your report. Uh, it's very good. It sounds like you're breathing a fresh, breath of fresh air into the special needs department. Um, the special education department, because um I know that's been something that we've been sort of struggling with with our MCAS schools the past number of years as well. Um, it seems like you have some great ideas to try to implement and see if they can work. I think the biggest challenge that I've heard earlier, as well as now, is first-year computer testing can be a challenge. Um, but of course, I hate to see that boggast dawn. I'd like to see it sort of grow with it. And I do realize, fellow school committee members, we are a vocational school. And that is our primary, you know, thing that we do here, and Ms. Davis, we are recognized by the governor frequently. We've got this nice creative lower workforce development association about to happen, this association with Lowell High School. Implement programs.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of great things that we can't lose sight of.
Sure, and we're we're and we're getting students really ready for the workforce, which is wonderful, as well as college, Mr. Barton, where they're graduating. So there's a lot of good news that comes out of it.
We're learning and growing. It's a learning and growing process.
Let alone the hundreds of hundreds of certifications that kids are able to attain here. It's just incredible.
Right, right. And the big deal is we do have to meet the state standard.
Yes, we do.
And it's something that comes up every year. It comes up all year long for you guys.
Just to take a moment to say, yes, we do realize that, and to thank the group of people that are here before me today. Who work hard every day and the teachers who work hard every day to to try to close that gap. And provide our students with the education that they deserve to be successful in the future. And and that's something that I think as a school, w- we we do a good job at. And we, can we get better at it? Yes, we can get a, get better at it. And we're gonna gonna continue to to do our best every day, because our students deserve the best education.
Sure, that's right. And the challenges a year from now, we'd love to see a better report than we saw today, so. It's on you guys, and I know you work really.
And they're working hard for it.
And they're working hard.
And we accept the challenge and we'll do the best that we can do.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Governor Salvi.
Thank you.
Five great kids and they all need money, can I just?
Uh, next item on the agenda is uh non-union negotiations, number six. And I'll be requesting an executive session uh for those non-union negotiations. End of the report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the reporter, the business manager.
Couple items for you tonight, um, the first being the F, uh, budget timeline for the FY twenty-one budget. Uh, we got a, an early jump on things this year with Superintendent Mastercola's departure upcoming here at the end of December, beginning of January. Um, we've already started working and had initial budget meetings with all of our staff members. Um, and from here moving forward, uh, um, in accordance with the laws of the state of Massachusetts, we'll be looking for. Um, our state funding but uh numbers coming out late in January. Uh, which will allow the first draft of the budget to come to the school committee for early February. Um, we'll have our public hearing in March, and then the um assessment and final adoption of the budgets coming in April of this year. As well, and uh as Superintendent Mastercola alluded to, the Student Opportunity Act has moved forward uh to the governor's desk and. Um, be very exciting to see what that looks like coming in January's numbers.
Might have an update for you at the next meeting, uh, with some numbers. We may have some numbers to to share, uh, what it may look like.
Would it be something like a percentage of our budget? Is that what we're considering, a two percent of our budget?
I'm gonna confess, like most superintendents, I was at a meeting yesterday, we all talked about the same thing. I think I need a degree in rocket science to figure out the formula. It's.
Go back to the formula?
It's a formula. So, yeah, I know they're spending time now with this, um. At our state organization, a superintendent's organization, they have people working on it. Once the governor passes it, uh, and they'll break it down for us, and then we'll get, we'll get an idea, but. I do think that uh due to the fact there is a. An attachment to low-income students in the law. I do think that we would most likely see some avenue towards that. I also think there's some pieces in the, it's it's actually, the bill is a, is a seventy-five-page document. There's other components of the bill. One other component talks about innovation within vocational programs. Such as the after-doc program and expanding programs for kids after school. I do think there'll be an, a a small amount of money there, and also it would affect our communities, our four communities. Which I think we may see, may see a much, much higher number with regional transportation. And that would help out, that would help out the assessments with our communities, obviously, uh, with the regional transportation number. You know, and they're, and what they have to contribute. So I think those three major things, but again, it's in essence now, it's a, it's a law. So to make out a law in in terms of how that's gonna affect day-to-day operators is pretty difficult at this point. But I'll hopefully I'll have some numbers and I can share that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll just look to have a motion to accept the schedule as presented in the packet from a committee member.
Motion by Committee O'Hair, seconded by Committee.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
All right, our second item is I have a single uh transfer request from the Science Department where they had excess money in their. Probably do this backwards, their supply line, um, or their equipment line that they needed for um just general supplies. So just moving that three thousand dollars so that they can use that as needed.
Motion to approve?
Second. Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Next item was a, looking for the approval to close uh one of our current bank accounts. Um, and open a new one to replace it. We had a bank account that was processing our credit card transactions. Um, through Bank of America at the beginning of October, they told me that, they sent us a letter that. Let us know that fees were gonna be associated with this account when they hadn't in the past. Um, going back retroactively to June uh of this year and charged on a quarterly basis. So this account did have an interest-bearing side to it, but um last fiscal year, the interest was about four hundred and eighty-five dollars in this account. It's not a, not a big money market account or anything. Um, and the fees, as they were being laid out on a quarterly basis, would have um cost us about five hundred and sixty-five bucks or something like that, so. Um, rather than that, we've chatted with Lowell Five, who we do some business with and have a branch here in the building, and. Um, discussed opening in a fee-free account for the same purpose. Um, they're confident that they'd be able to help us out with that, and so am I, so. Uh, we're looking to get the approval to close uh the Bank of America account and open a Lowell Five account in its place, and then there's a second motion below that as well.
Does that account bear interest too?
Uh, it does not, but what they have, um, talked to me about is, um, because we generally do carry a balance in this account, what we could do is they have. Um, simple CDs that you can do, um, either staggered or such that we could make actually probably a greater percentage of interest than we were. In the account that we had open.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Will you open the motion, Kempson?
I'll move.
Seconded by Mr. Moran.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
All right, and the second half of this is, um, in order to update the merchant services account that process the. Uh, credit card payments that we take here in the school, we need to update the owners on those accounts, and they wanted the school committee motion um to do so. Um, so currently listed a previous business manager as the legal signer on the account. Um, and I'm looking for the committee to make a move to have the legal signer changed to the district treasurer for those two accounts. Um, as he's the legal signer on uh the rest, the remainder of our accounts.
Motion by Committee Vintatius, seconded by Committee Vinbao.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes. Um, and then my final item is just an update that we did file um for our excess and deficiency number with the Department of Local Services. Maybe unedited and uncertified amount as it stands right now. Uh, is one, about one point eight uh million right now, which uh comes out to be about four percent of our budget this year. Believe it's a great place to be at. You don't wanna be pushing that five percent limit. Um, but you also wanna make sure you have enough in the bank should tragedy strike or something occurs and need a little bailout, so. Um, just from my perspective, it's a great spot and um barring, barring audit changes or anything. We should be looking pretty good here.
Perfect. Thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
All business, any items uh on the agenda brought up?
Yeah.
To be brought up, uh, Committee Mano here.
If I may, just look at the. I had this earlier. No, I just, I just happened, I don't, I don't keep it right, I have it right here. Oh, here we go. Yeah, we've had a couple of things on our agendas, but they're lasting for years. And I just thought it might be a good time to make some action on this, because I I think anything that goes over ten years is a waste of time. But a couple of things that we had, the outstanding uh items from previous meetings, but we never really uh voted on them. And they're they're basic things, they're nothing uh that are gonna change the face of this school, but uh. Oh, yeah, one of the items that uh kind of bothered me for a long period of time, and it's still up in the air, no one has said anything about this for a while. But I just wanna, this is a, an outstanding item from a previous uh meeting that we had. Oh, yeah, and uh there there's two of them, this is the first one I'll read off. We have a policy subcommittee for superintendent development. A district wellness policy for the school that may include the distribution of condoms for students. And somebody else uh the attached their name to the item also. It's um, the point is, I really don't think that's something that should be coming before us at this particular time and such. And we're at such a long time waiting, I really don't think it's that important. So I would just as soon like to see that uh um policy just abandoned. All right, if it may, uh, because you've had a long time, years before to do anything, no one's doing anything. So let's just uh eliminate that from the uh outstanding items from previous meetings.
Any other comments? Hearing none?
Okay, passed?
Thanks.
Wait, it passed?
Well, yeah, we're just gonna take it off.
Yeah, okay, the second, the second item and the only other one I have is the Athletic Hall of Fame. And there is another situation that's been, oh, that's been hanging up.
That's on the agenda for the foundation at the December fifth meeting.
Okay.
They already discussed it at their October meeting, and they're going to revisit it at the December fifth meeting. Mr. Lindsay is being in touch with a couple of people.
Okay, good.
Who have talked to him, and Mr. Cassin is going to be overseeing most of that fundraising stuff.
Yeah, because that one was lasting an awful long time.
So that should come off here because it's going to the foundation.
Uh, that's a very good, uh, that's a very good, now, are you suggesting that it just comes off the, off the?
Off here because the foundation is taking it over.
Okay.
They're working on um deciding on a date to have the event. And where they're gonna have it and what style, what they're gonna have a dinner and all that stuff.
Okay.
Well, let me make a comment on that.
Yeah.
Just so that we can sort of follow up on this and it sort of stays on top of, you know, um, our thoughts. Why don't we just keep it on, and we can ask questions to see what the foundation is doing, if we haven't heard anything for a six-month or a year? And then we can sort of bring it right back up if that's something that we want to do.
Well, let me respond to that also, and one of the reasons why I bring this up right now, which could be or doesn't have to be. But, you know, we we got to sort it is, it's fine, but uh. The Hall of Fame that was suggested is like fifteen years ago, ten years ago, ten to fifteen years ago, and no one's moved on it. And I'm just saying either Fisher cut bait, one or the other, and I think it's time for us to do that. Um, the, if you look in this building right now, uh, when we were kind of high and. Uh, excited about doing something like this, if you look in one of the rooms, or one or two of the rooms around there, they're using that for, you know. Taking care of some of the uh work that has to be done in some, on on the, on the next level in the school. And I, I really don't think that was the, the uh focus that we were trying to do. We were trying to do what we're suggesting right now, and let's, let's do it rather than wait another.
The foundation, that is.
Okay, all right, but I just wanna, you know, everything is, everything is something, but we'll uh remove this, well, we'll just uh put this on the foundations.
Yeah, you'll be at the foundation meeting, so you'll, you'll be part of the discussion.
Okay. Okay.
It's December fifth?
Okay.
Can we just keep it on? Do you mind if we just keep it on?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Don't just keep it there.
Yeah, but, yes, you can.
Okay, that's all. And then we'll go to the next one.
The issue is, you know, if you want to keep it, and, you know, put it, if you're watching a basketball game or something, go around the corner where they have tonic. There's all the damn things hanging out, you know. There's never anything there, other than junk, you know, that they're moving around. So as long as, yeah, I'll be there, and if it isn't that way, we'll just move it. But I'm sure that something's gonna move after about fifteen years. Okay, let's.
After the, after that, we have, it's still basically all business, discussion regarding the superintendent search.
Okay, but now, we're all, we're all set on the last item, the outstanding items from previous?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just primarily looking for, you know, the timeframe when we submit the request and the opening, so that we can move the thing forward. Because you're running into the holidays, and then you got the beginning of the year, and that's about when we want to get it started.
Post something?
After January.
After January.
Okay. That's good.
Now, I assume, I didn't mean to jump, but, you know, what we just went through, I don't want to use the word assumption, although we could. That's gonna be the responsibility of the, the group that we have right here.
We usually do it as a whole committee, but that's what we've done in the past.
Right. And Ms. Tanny will be doing it with you.
Okay, fine, excellent.
The human resource director.
Okay, so anyway, there's a discussion, what we're talking about is a discussion regarding the superintendent search.
Right.
So I'm hearing we're gonna come up with some type of advertisement for it? Is that what I heard?
In January, you'll have a meeting to develop the timeline and the ad, you know, how you want to post, where you want to advertise it, just like in the past.
Okay, so we'll, so.
But you'll be doing it with Ms. Tanny, right. She has all my previous materials.
Sure.
So she's well aware, she is, she will, she already knows that she'll be on board with, meeting with you guys instead of me being there. She will be there.
Okay, so after the holiday season is what I'm hearing, and I'm hearing in January. Is that going to take place, Mr. Chairman? Who's running the superintendent search? Mr. Chairman, will that be taking place at a regular school committee meeting on the third Thursday of January, or will it be a special meeting on that date to discuss that superintendent search?
I'm hoping there's suggestions if you'd like to move it away from that.
Well, that can be sometimes cumbersome. I know that first timeline date, as well as developing criteria and such like that, it can sometimes take as much as an hour. So I'm just trying to think what the school committee would like to do, if they'd like to have a special date for it, or if they would like to piggyback it, maybe put it before a school committee meeting in January, an hour, two hours, an hour and a half before the regular school committee meeting, or if we just want to choose another date. So, sort of a show of hands of what people might be interested in.
What is this, what's the final thing that you're looking for?
Just sort of, when we will develop our criteria search.
Several meetings?
For the new superintendent. Will we do it on the regular school committee day, or will we do it?
Well, an hour before.
I think an hour before is, yeah.
Yeah, well, we do it an hour before the regular meeting.
So that's January sixteenth, is the January meeting.
Okay.
I think that's an hour before, so that's 5:30.
5:30?
5:30.
That'll work.
It might take us an hour.
Any other comments from the board members?
Five o'clock's too early, is that correct?
For some people, it's difficult.
Got you. Terrific. Could be too early for me. Terrific. Thank you. And if we need to continue it, I guess we could continue it after the meeting as well.
Yeah, that would be a good thing to do.
Right.
That's actually a good point.
We'll take up new business? Was there any new business?
I just have a quick question. All us, what do you, can we take those, and then do we hand out copies to the, like, Drake? Do we do that? Is that something we do?
We do some of it, but not, not every single event. But we do do some of it, and we do have a partnership with the Drake Public Access Group for there. And I'm not really sure about the other communities.
Okay, all right.
But I do know that we have that relationship with them. But not all the events, not every single event is broadcast.
Okay, thanks.
There were two levels.
This one here?
Two levels, a low level that they had when they were doing it, which was fine.
Yeah.
Basketball.
It's just doing non-union negotiations.
Okay.
We still have, you have to make sure there's no committee member.
Yeah, is there any, committee member motions? Report to subcommittees?
We need a motion for executive session.
Okay, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna need a motion to enter into executive session.
For non-union negotiations.
For non, for the purpose of non-negotiations.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron, will there be any votes after?
No.
Okay, so there'll be no votes after, so will we convene just for adjourns? That's it. Okay.
Thank you, research.
There's something here.
He said, no, recess.
We're gonna recess.